Yeah, I'm about six feet from the desk. How about now?
I can still hear you.
Okay, good. I'm gonna just leave you on, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Say hi to everybody. Elijah's right here.
You know, my Alan, I was thinking that, um, next time, next month, I think we ought to take a roll call. I think that was stated in the Freedom of Information.
Oh, in the four-year class? You mean roll call votes?
Yeah, like all of them is in attendance. I mean, we could just say our names just for the record, but I think we should, I don't think we do that.
All right. I'm gonna leave you on, Janet. Okay. If for some reason you get disconnected, I'll just bang, call you right back. Well, you sound crystal clear right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. You're on a charger.
Paul, you're familiar with 438. You're not gonna hear that one tonight?
Uh...
On the heat, I thought you said...
It was advertised.
No, I didn't hear that.
Okay, you're not skipping that one. Okay, cross it right off. That's gonna be re-advertised.
Which one's that?
438.
It's, uh...
Yeah.
Oh, it's E.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
When it was, uh, legal notice, it was done as 438 Farrow Road.
Aye, there we go.
Actually, hold on, maybe I put the wrong one, I think. I'm sorry, it's 283.
We're not doing 283.
Not doing 283.
What, 283's out tonight?
It's out. Yeah, it was advertised as...
Oh, okay.
438's selling.
438's in here.
Okay.
That's 438.
You'll have it for next time.
Yeah, I'm already ready for 238. Hey, Janet?
Yes?
Uh, 238 is out tonight.
283.
Oh, excuse me. Two eight, 283?
Yeah, 283.
A.
Two, 283.
Yeah, the first hearing.
Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-six.
You mean 283?
Yes.
Correct.
Actually, hold on. Hold on, I apologize.
Oh, Brad.
I know, hold on a second.
That's 438.
Yes, well, it should be 438 Candlewood Lake Road. It was advertised as 438 Farrow Road.
So, 438 Candlewood Lake Road is out?
It's out.
Wait, so E, E is out?
E is out.
E is out. Okay, A is an A.
I was out, I'm sorry.
Hey, Janet, did you catch that?
Yep.
Okay.
438 is out?
438 is out.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's, there's two out.
No, just one, just the one, yeah.
Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-three is out.
Yep. It was advertised as Farrow Road, but it's actually Candlewood Lake Road.
Yes. It was because I didn't get it on my...
Alan, is, is 283 in?
283 is in.
Next week.
That's, that's week.
Next week. You got the night off.
There's communications.
We don't allow to make this thing.
I know, I can't help it. It's crazy, it is out. Covid.
I don't have her phone number either. Does anybody?
They have a phone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they have. We can start, we've got five.
I know Richard's not coming.
Yeah, I know Richard's not coming. I haven't heard from Larry or just the...
He scrolls in right around there, right? Like right at, like seven.
Yeah. Pretty plucky. Okay, I guess we can get started if they come in. Right. Uh, can we please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2022 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening. Chairman Carl Hinger, Vice Chairman Alan Donnelly, Janet La Forge, Judd coming through, uh, the phone. Lisa Temple.
Sorry.
Uh, Nahid Kaiser. Uh, Elijah Holling. Fran Lally, our zoning enforcement officer, and Allison Kennedy, our recording secretary. Uh, the current agenda can be found under Board Meetings on this town website. I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward and tell us about your appeal. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of this meeting and move on to deliberations. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. You're welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the land use office in the morning. Note that in regards to any appeal that is granted, it is constrained to the plans submitted and to any purposes stated in, in the application unless the board specifically notes otherwise. The public hearing is only one aspect of the approval process and is for the purpose of accepting factual information and data bearing on this application and allows expression of opinion by interested parties. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. After reading into the record the correspondence received by the board relative to this application, we will ask the applicant to present the application in detail. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the applicant's presentation. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. As you're recognized, please state your name and address each time before you speak so that your comments may be legally recorded. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application. And in view of the time constraints placed upon us, we ask you indulge in not reiterating comments previously presented. Uh, first matter is, uh, of a review of our minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm moved to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, do I have a second? Uh, oh, and by the way, you'll be, we have five people, no.
One, two, three.
No, Janet is here, that's right. Sorry, Janet. Janet is here. We do have five regular members, okay. Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes of the previous meeting?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted?
Aye.
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 All right, on to, uh, review correspondence, which is the minutes of our other commissions. No actions necessary. Um, so moving on to public hearings. Uh, Fran, just to make sure I have this right, A is on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, 283 isn't the agenda, so our first application is Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-six, which is 283 Candlewood Lake Road. Did the applicant, yes, uh, come forward and...
Do I sit here or?
Uh, standing. Oh, there is a correspondent, yes. Uh, first, let me read the correspondence into the record. Whatever your comfortable with, sorry. Yes, you can sit, say I'm... Isn't there another correspondence? Is this a... Yes, it was, uh, it was got it on the, yes. Uh, is this a new correspondence?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, okay, so, yeah, so first we have a correspondent. Uh, I have no issue with this, with Mr. Morales' application, and that is, uh, by Carl Cat, Katrin of 289 Candlewood Lake, Candlewood Lake? Yeah, Candlewood Lake. Candlewood LLC, sorry, remember. Yes, 289. Uh, and then we have the correspondence from Carol Wagner, which is dated June 6th, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals. My vote is against Elliot's application for variance. I have no choice. I must protect my ability to view the lake from my home as well as my property value. Currently, I can view the lake over Elliot's home slash business and the Kline home. If Elliot, Elliot's variance is approved and he adds a second story addition, I will lose half my view and the value of my home will decrease. I'm, I'm sure if our roles were reversed, Elliot would feel the same way. Elliot knows the value of a lake view. In fact, he had some trees slash shrubs removed from the Kline home to increase the view of the lake to his left, to his left. He told Russ Kline that he had a million dollar view. Elliot has a million dollar view as well. I am just trying not to lose the view that I currently have. It's not right or fair for Elliot to take that away from me, especially since he has ground level options for his addition. Last time we spoke about his addition, he told me it would be in three to four years. I'm confused, why is he applying for a variance now? I believe the 3.5 foot problem setback is between our two properties. Apparently, his home slash business is too close to my property. I don't know how that happened, perhaps if rules change. Anyway, I do not wish to lose the additional setback footage. Thank you, Carol Wagner.
Is there an address on that, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, there is no address. Uh, oh, 10 Candlewood Acres Road, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a copy of that letter.
That was just submitted today. I just got a copy of that as well from, uh, Fran. I don't think anyone has a copy of it. Okay, so with those read in, uh, would you like to tell us a little bit about your appeal?
Yeah, um, just read what I added. The house is pre-existing, non-conforming. I am not changing the footprint out, only going up. Uh, I will be under the height, uh, regulations. And if you look at the picture, well, first because Carol sent that, if you look at the, if you look at the, the map, the survey, you will see where her property is. It's not even... The corner of my house, um, butts, butts, uh, Russ Kline's home. So, it's not even, if you look, this is where I think her property line is.
Yeah.
It's, it's way up here. So, I understand she's gonna block her, you know, her view, but if you look at the picture of my neighbor, he's got the same level height. And, you know, I'm sorry if she, you know, can't, uh, have a view. She will have a view on the left of the house and the, and the right. So, I, I just, you know, I don't understand why, you know, um, you know, it's funny because she's doing work on her house and I have a little parking lot in the back and I let her contractors use my parking lot. So, I'm a little shocked. But anyway, so I don't think with the two-foot, um, two, really a two-foot setback, I think I put three, two and a half. You know, I, I, I believe it should be okay and granted, uh, to go up. It's not, her property line is like 20 feet above. And I believe you were at my house, uh, Alan, Mr. Donnelly. So, if you go by the fence, she has 10 feet down where my driveway is, so.
Okay. Uh, does anyone have questions for the applicant?
What, what is, um, you say it's under the height regulations?
Yeah, it's under the height. Yeah, I went over it with, um... Mr. Holling? No. Nina? Nina. I believe it was Nina. I went over it and she goes, you just made it under and, and that was fine. And I went a little bit over it with Fran with the, with the two and a half, um, the, the variance. Um, so, you know, I don't, I don't see why there would be a problem for me to go up. Right now, I have a, a two-bedroom on the lower level because I converted my master as my office. And I'd like to put a third bedroom upstairs, and I don't understand why I cannot do that.
So, the variance isn't for height?
No, it's just for, it's like two and a half feet.
To the property.
To the, to the property line, right?
Right, sorry.
Right. Yeah, if you're looking. Yeah, it's pre-existing, not...
Yeah, it's the bottom side of the...
That's a pre-existing.
Yeah, if you're looking. Yeah, it's pre-existing, not...
Yeah, it's the bottom side of the...
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Morales, if the, um, could you come up from, through the threshold? Is this Mrs. Wagner's house, 10 Candlewood Acres? Right here? Yep. Okay, and this is, this is your house?
No, this one right here.
Yeah, this is your house right here.
Yep.
All right, I did go out and look at it, uh, with, and I know that that was last minute, but I only looked at it in comparison to the variance. And that's where my notes are here.
Right.
Um, so I never looked at the angle that she's discussing right there. Just letting you know that. Well, the angle from her house going down in the view, I, I never really... Absolutely, go ahead. So... So, I never really looked at her angle. I know that's only here. Right. Try it from two days, maybe, maybe three days better. So, that's your house. So, her property line is from this side of the, that corner. Right. Does it basically follow the same line kind of going down here? No, no, it, it, it goes this way. It goes, it goes that way. And the survey should show that. Yeah, I saw this one right here. Yep, okay. That one I saw. So, so her is from that corner, it's 10 feet. It's only 10 feet, uh, there. Here's the corner of my house. Has nothing to do with her, and she's up high enough, but there's trees blocking her there. And I just wanna, just wanna match what, what my neighbor John has. So, you're coming out 12 feet, nine inches this way, sir, to the right side? No, 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 I'm going straight up. Oh, it's only a difference of two feet. I think it's 15 feet. Okay. And what's... So, it's just basically sitting right atop of the house, boom, and you're going up another floor? I'm just going up another floor. Okay. It's gonna be identical to this, my neighbor's house. I got you. And it, and it's less than three feet. I think it's two, um, what do we have here?
Yeah, we just requested three feet.
Yeah, because, you know... Is that fence a property line? That was another one of my questions. You know, that little fence is there. Yeah, that's right, yeah. That's, that fence is the property line? Okay, I saw that. 12 foot nine is from the, does that sound about right? Yeah, 12 foot, and I think I need 15, 12 foot nine over, that leaves two.
Two feet.
Yeah, two feet, seven and a half inches to the foundation. That's what I came up with. Um, right there. Okay, all right. Um, thank you very much. I did not look at this angle though. I noticed this last minute. What angle is that? Well, basically, so if, if you had another floor on there and I knew you had your parking lot, that's where I parked up above, you know, I'd walk down and look at it. I never really stood up here and looked at it. I went just, you know, directly over and looked at where you were looking for, for the variance, sir. Um, so I don't, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what she's talking about. Because I, I didn't look at it. And her view, you see her property here? Her view's this way. You know, that should be her view over the Kline's house.
And he's not asking for a variance to go up either.
Right.
It's, he's, he's goes up.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a height.
Right.
The variance is not, it's too high.
Right. And if you look at the picture I provided, just like the neighbor next door, I'm not going any higher.
This picture?
Yeah, that's it. You see my neighbor right here? Yeah. If you see the neighbor? I just wanna go up one more story and put a...
Do you know if your neighbor has, um, uh, variance?
My neighbor, if she has a variance?
The one up, the, the one that you wanna match the house.
Oh, no, it was built, it was built like that. I believe it was built like that. Thank you, sir. Okay, so, I could, you, are you gonna rule on it this evening? Should I stay?
Yeah, so after we go through...
Hear everyone?
Yeah, after we hear everyone, we'll go into our, uh, discussions, deliberations.
Perfect.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant?
I wanna thank you all. Thank you, sir.
Before we conclude, do, uh, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor of this application?
I, I want to speak in, uh, just for clarification.
Yes. Uh, can you, can you stand and state your, uh, name and address?
My name is Aaron Marcus, and I am a resident of, uh, 20 Candlewood Acres. And, um, I'm just looking for clarification because, um, there's a lot of speculation in my neighborhood and I'm here for clarification if it is a commercial, um, uh, expansion of, um, adding offices into the property, which he has every right to do. It's zone commercial. But, um, the people on the Candlewood Acres Road, which there is no parking lot, um, are concerned about if that is the case, any, um, increased traffic on the residential road. And, um, that was the objection of, of, um, if that parking lot, which, you know, is a recent addition to our neighborhood, is, will be used as a commercial part of, I mean, being able to have the variance to go up.
Can I answer that?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I'm looking for clarification.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So, upstairs, I'm putting a master suite. It's gonna be a master bedroom with a walk-in closet, large bathroom with a washer dryer upstairs. Um, so, and then downstairs, I have two bedrooms and an office. There's nothing commercial. Only commercial is 283 Candlewood Lake Road LLC is to protect in case somebody falls or anything else like that. So, I have, um, a lot of properties and they're all under LLC, uh, as well as the $2 million umbrella. So, it's just for protection, and I recommend everyone should be... Um, so upstairs, nothing commercial, so be quite sure. I don't want my home to be...
So, the property is not gonna be used as a commercial venture?
Right, no, there'll never be. You had a question about the parking lot, ma'am? No, if, if I was gonna have cars, you know, as a commercial.
That kind of clarifies. Then, the fact, yeah, because that was the only issue of, um...
And it's not zone commercial, they can't do it anyway.
It is zone commercial, no?
No, it's not, it's R-15.
It's R-15. Yeah, it's R-15, that's residential. Right.
The Candlewood Lake Road is, um...
That particular zone is R-15.
It's R-15.
Yeah.
Wow, that would be no issue, very good. Although I really lose my view, which is way away from your struggle. So, I understand your concern.
Of course.
Okay, is there any, uh...
Thank you, ma'am.
Any further questions? Uh, is there any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition of this application? Hearing none? Uh, would you like to make any closing remarks before we close the evidentiary portion?
Other than I think I have the right to go up on my home, um, I'm only looking for small little variance. And Carol's home, just to speak on her, she has view if the Klines have cut their trees down. And I've been very nice to her, and I've even cut a, a tree off of her property on my, on mine. And I put nice bushes, Mr. Donnelly. When you walk down those beautiful road bushes, I put them on, you know, for her. Near the fence, sir? Yeah, near the fence. Those are, you know, I did that, you know, to be neighborly. And I'm, I'm a little surprised that she would, you know, she would do that. After me, for, you know, she's doing construction in her home, I'm just really, I'm really surprised because I let her people park on my, in my little parking area. So, that's not really neighborly. So, I think, I, you know, I believe I have the right and I hope you guys will approve it, you know, just like my neighbors to go up as well. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion of this application?
I'm moved to close, Mr. Chairman.
The second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Would I be able to get a copy of that letter?
Uh, Fran, could you get a...
Doesn't have to be today, tomorrow for the next day.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will move on to the second application, uh, 128 Federal Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven. I don't think we have any correspondence from this one, do we? I don't remember seeing any.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hide behind the mask, it's Neil Marcus, Tona Wolf PC, 158 Deer Hill Avenue in Danbury.
Evening, Mr. Marcus.
And in deference to the fact that I've got a slight head cold, I'll wear my mask, so hopefully I'll talk through it. Uh, with me tonight, of course, Michelle from Artel Engineering, and she's going to run through the site plan with you. This property, uh, hopefully is well-known to the board. It's on Federal Road, obviously, uh, basically in front of BJ's. And the proposal is to build a small building that was requiring a drive-through, uh, to the rear. And the site itself, as we've explained in our application for a six-foot front yard setback for the driveway and parking lot, is a long, narrow site, which has a couple of, of restrictive, uh, issues. One is significant, some significant wetlands on the west side. And we were requested by the Inland Wetlands Commission to shift the drive-through to the east, which shifts the building to the east and the parking lot to the east, even though we explained that we didn't really have enough room to do that without seeking a variance. And the Inland Wetland Commission felt that the additional five feet to the protection, which would be protecting the wetlands, was a grounds for us to come here and seek, uh, a minor variance on the roadside. Now, the roadside has been complicated by the fact that the state is currently in the process of, uh, doing roadwork, obviously, and they're building a sidewalk. So, they've taken property from our easterly side to, uh, to accommodate the sidewalk. As a result of that, the island here is six feet too narrow. Is that a fair...
Correct, yeah.
Okay, my engineer will tell me when my numbers are off. So, the request is pretty simple, and that is to allow us to build this configuration in deference to the fact that we're gonna stay another five feet off of the wetlands. And that's it. Other than that, this property here conforms, uh, to all of your regulations and to the zoning, uh, scheme of the area completely. And, uh, we think it's, again, it's a good use of a property, which, again, historically, uh, was kind of a very strange, has a strange history. Uh, that whole section of, of, uh, the former Caldor's property that was expanded many years ago, uh, had some issues with wetlands, it had some issues with, uh, with actually dumping over the years. That proportion of it was actually, uh, a little dump. It's been cleaned up and obviously, uh, it's a, I think it's a, uh, prime retail location, which with probably the site plan that we're talking about here is, is a attribute to the, uh, to the tax base of the town of Brookfield. It, uh, as I say, it's a, it's a pretty minor, uh, request. We don't think it has any negative impact on Federal Road. Obviously, we do need to get permits from the state DOT for anything we do. Um, and we actually had a, a very good reception in, in front of Inland Wetlands. Uh, in reality, I was sort of surprised by the five feet, but if that's their only concern, uh, it's, that's relatively unscathed from the commission. Uh, we are gonna appear to, before the zoning commission, obviously, to get a site plan approval and design review, but, uh, this is our second step, and the second step is to address the, the six feet.
All right, thank you.
Do you have something to add?
I, well, you kind of covered it all.
I figured I'd write you for last minute, so it's okay. Uh, but, uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, uh, does anyone have any questions?
Is there room in the construction portion of it to take in the five feet? The plant that you have?
Is, okay.
For the building, to...
The plans that you have for the building, to the actual building?
You're saying make the building five feet narrower?
Is there room for that?
Actually not. We've already done that. The first thing we did for the, for the Wetlands Commission was to narrow it down, but we just couldn't get any steeper, in reality.
It's only about twenty-five feet wide.
The building, yes. I mean, it's a pretty narrow building. When you think of it, it's not a lot different from going from that wall to that wall out there. It's pretty short.
I have a question, sir. Mr. Marcus-
Yes, sir.
Michelle, you know approximately how many times you went in front of wetlands? And then my main question is, the first time you went there, at least as far back as I went, was March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah.
One of the first times and you were disturbing at that particular time about four hundred and twenty-five square feet of wetlands?
Yeah, we were, I was probably before them six or seven times, maybe?
Yeah.
Making, so we originally had the twenty-five feet, so we didn't need the variance. But in that order to do that, we had to disturb the wetlands. So, you know, to, to work with them, to not disturb the wetlands, we had to shift everything forward. And we kind of went back and forth with a couple of different options, with this one being the final one that they were happy with.
So how many square feet, if any, on this are you disturbing of the wetlands?
Zero.
Zero?
Zero.
Zero. Okay. I have another question and I wish Mr. Verbeckus, I wish he was here.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
He's on vacation.
I guess this is maybe your third or fourth time in front of them. Okay, at the Inland Wetland meeting on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
I did do the meeting, so I might be able to answer your question.
Okay. It was thirty minutes and seventeen seconds, seventeen seconds. And the reason I'm bringing this up is I think it's important. The developer, Mr. D. Verbeckus, was very disappointed. They was asked to move it out of the wetlands, then they moved it, and now the guidance keeps moving. Now, six or five feet is the magic number. He was asking the chairwoman about that. It keeps mov- moving. He reiterated that it could be done without any damage to the wetlands and he was looking for guidance. Does that sound kinda sorta accurate?
Yeah, because we went, that's why we were before them for so many meetings, was kind of getting that magic number of what they were satisfied with, getting inching closer and closer to Federal Road. We were trying to, you know, to not have to come before you for the variance. And we would move it and then she had asked for a letter from, because we have a retaining wall on the rear here. So she had asked for a letter from her structural engineer of-
I remember that.
If we need to, if they're gonna disturb the wetlands and then she wasn't-
And she had issues on how they're gonna build the wall?
She had issues on that, so we had to get, it was just a kind of a back and forth. So I think Mr. Verbeckus was just, I think he was frustrated of, to try to get that magic number of five feet without, you know, to satisfy them.
Okay. Same meeting, ma'am?
Yes.
At thirty-three thirty, I guess you guys made an agree- agreement with state DOT to give an easement for the sidewalk out front? So they didn't take the land from you, basically, and build it themselves? Does that sound correct?
Well, we agreed, rather than require them to buy, because if they take it, they buy.
Buy it. Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant buy.
Instead of buying the feet of this, we'll give them an easement.
Right.
But they, they, in fact, built the sidewalk. We're not building it, to my knowledge.
I mean, it's part of their-
Yeah, it's part of their project.
All right, very important and this goes to the safety issue I have. This was Mr. D. Verbeckus speaking. When the inland wetlands suggested, hey, why don't you move everything, the building, make it smaller? The chairman and the vice chairman were mentioning that there. And then Mr. D. Verbeckus said, if you do that and you push it forward, then the parking lot and everything around there, it's just too tight to negotiate for vehicle movement.
That's correct.
And I'm thinking these regular vehicles in there, emergency vehicles, any vehicle movements.
Correct.
So basically, the way that you guys had to move it right now, I can, I mean, if that's an accurate statement by him, he thinks it's too tight.
Well, the way, they, because they wanted us to shift the entrance here. They wanted this more up further, so they wanted us to shift the entrance. By doing that, you know, we have this bridge here and we're kind of in line with this entrance for the bank and it would just make unsafe movements for vehicles to get in and out. So by moving it even further, we just didn't feel they were getting closer to this federal road intersection. We didn't feel it was a safe maneuver.
That's the section that goes out into like BJ's kind of?
Yeah, so this is the light, you have Savers over here and Harbor Freight and then there's the Bank of America is here. So this is the light and you come here, there's the bridge that goes over the Eastbrook. And if you come in, there's the stop, stop sign over here to go to the gas station and the Kohl's. So they were looking for us to move this up further, which just-
Doesn't work.
Didn't, wasn't, it was too close to the intersection and you got rid of the alignment with the Bank of America. So it was just unsafe maneuvering for cars to come in and out.
Okay.
Your question is, the current design, is there any issue?
No.
No. I mean, this meets the requirements.
The current design is not disturbing wetlands at all. The biggest thing, I guess, I could get out of it in watching the rest of the meetings is they were worried about snowplows and things like that and any sediment or sand possibly getting in and disturbing it. But that's why you guys were basically putting that retaining wall in the back?
Correct, we have a retaining wall, we have a basin, we have a little basin, we have infiltration that we're putting in, the deep some catch basins to capture and try to limit anything that gets into, to the wetlands. And we're doing some invasive removal in there with the plantings and we're planting the area.
Question for you, sir.
Sure.
Has, is your client, have they done any studies at all or, you know, checked a book for PD or DOT about accidents and things like that? And I'm going back to the safety concerns and stuff like that. Do you have anything like that, sir?
We have the traffic engineer, Mike Colotti from Frederick Clark, who's been working on the site and the design from day one. And he interfaces with the Brookfield PD and with, more importantly, the DOT. Because eventually, they control this intersection, no question about that. And he's confident that this works. The issue is, of course, you've got a lot of traffic in that area, I mean, nobody denies that. Our use is not gonna add any real traffic. Our use is gonna serve the existing traffic. In reality, people are coming, there's no question, the traffic generation is BJ's on that driveway and BJ's gas station would sort of die down and another buck a gallon will disappear completely if the price keeps going up. But the, this is, you know, this is proposed to be Starbucks and, you know, to be a coffee shop. But people are gonna not go out of their way to go to Starbucks here. You've probably heard this before. It's people who are on the road are gonna say that we're gonna turn in there and turn out. And so it's not additional traffic, it's the intersection movement. And the DOT with all these improvements, doesn't really have a problem with the, the traffic light movements for us.
On the northeast of your side of your property, that is gonna be an entrance and an exit, sir?
Yes, here.
Right there?
Yeah.
Oh, right there.
You're talking this one here?
This one here?
Yeah, northeast of your side, that's gonna be-
Yeah, this is one-way in and one-way out.
Okay, so they can go in there and they can pull around. And then as soon as you go in, what, is that eighty or ninety feet down once you turn into the, I'll call it the BJ's parking lot? Where you're, if that's gonna be an entrance and an exit as well, sir?
From there, yeah.
About eighty feet.
About eighty feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, this is the entrance here-
You've been doing this too long when you can eyeball it, yeah.
This is the entrance/exit to the Bank of America, so it's kind of in alignment with the Bank of America.
I have a question for you, ma'am, on the flood zone. And I don't know if you could point it out because you're probably better at it than me. If you look at the flood zone-
Yep, I have it on the plan.
Okay, you got it. Does that match this one? Is that the one from FEMA twenty thirteen?
Yeah, so there's this dark dash line is the flood, the FEMA flood line right here.
All right. Where that and obviously it looks to me like if there's a flood, it basically goes to BJ's parking lot mostly with the lay of the land and the curvature of the land. That's the way I shift it, looks like it, it's on?
Yeah.
That's a drainage flow.
Yeah.
Definitely back there. As a matter of fact, the state has a, a right to drain the highway right back through the property.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. It looks, I don't know, the way they have this on the FEMA one, it kind of shows like it's coming right through, you know, where your entrance/exit is there? They have it a little bit farther on here, I don't know which one. This is on the GAS, ma'am.
Okay, this comes right over the FEMA maps?
It is more accurate.
Oh, okay.
That's more accurate.
All right, that's good.
This from, the surveyor, you know, places it on the survey when he does, he does the field survey.
Okay. I have a question for Fran, Mr. Chairman, real quick. Fran, I know you spoke to me real quick about the reason behind and the intent and it was done a long time ago, that particular code. I guess part of it was to make room for easement and the other part of it, I guess, was safety?
I can't speculate on that. I don't know why that was put into regulations. That was before my time.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't comment on that.
I know that you guys did talk to the fire marshal. You had a fire marshal letter and in the southern eastern side, you're gonna put a hydrant in?
Hmm, yes.
Yes.
I saw that in the record there. I also called the fire marshal just to confirm that and I asked him his opinion on that twenty-five feet area there. And he thought it was a couple of things, which I guess I agree with him. But number one was in case of easements and they're working on the road and they gotta widen it and stuff like that, obviously. And I asked him, hey, let's say it was congested, there was a fire or something like that and you had to pull engines up. Are you gonna park on that? He goes, absolutely. You know, they're gonna park wherever they got to to tie into it and go on there, so.
They still pretty, you know, this whole, this is all the grass and landscapes in the front, so there's still a lot of room to be able to pull. And there's, you know, Federal Road is up here, so we're more than twenty-five feet from Federal Road.
Yeah, there is a, there's a buffer in between the property line and the actual-
Yeah, you got the mulled grass on the one side and then it's right up against the road with a, with a weasels top on.
And if I could just make one comment, if this gets approved or whatever, it's gonna go to the zoning commission, it's gonna go to the police for review, it's gonna go to fire for review, it's gonna go to building for review. It's gonna go to all the other departments, so if anybody has any concerns, that's when those concerns will be brought up, so.
You're absolutely correct.
Does anyone else have any?
Final questions? The hardships that you mentioned in there, okay, besides the FEMA flood zone, is the biggest part of it that I saw was, was the inland wetlands request or whatever?
Yeah.
Which you were not disturbing one quarter foot of wetlands.
Exactly. We are asking you to sacrifice the six feet to us because we think it's, it's appropriate to satisfy the concerns of wetlands. But the other thing, of course, you have some of the traditional limitations on this site that require, that you qualify for a legal hardship. And that is, it's a long and narrow site when you come down to it, we don't have much depth. And we do have both the flood plain and the wetlands and-
You have the brook in there, too?
Yeah, a brook to cross. I mean, we have, we can't engineer this site any better than what's before you at this point. We've done everything. And you pointed out, Dynis was getting a little frustrated with inland wetlands when every time we'd come back and he'd say, okay, I'll, I'll take something else off. And finally, he did get them to say, this works for them. Just go see the ZBA and see if you can get cooperation there as well. That's where we are.
We didn't get approval from them as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Can we go next, ma'am? Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak in support of this application? Hearing none, is there any?
I have, I'm talking about one twenty-one Federal Road, the diner, it's pretty much across the street.
Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
George Martinakis, one sixty-three Eagle View, South Berry, Connecticut.
Let me see that, just a minute.
My biggest concern is the traffic, other than that. I mean, already it's, it's manageable now, but, I don't know. This is directly across the street, I'm kind of-
So BJ's is back here?
Right, so it's-
So the light is right here and the, oh, this is the entrance for Savers and Harbor Freight?
Directly across from the diner, right, ma'am?
Yeah.
You know the diner?
There's the tile store is right there.
Yeah, directly across the diner, it's been like that forever, right? It's been, yeah, for years.
Are there any other members in the public?
That's my only thing, is the traffic.
Yes, state your name and address, please.
John Weber, I'm the owner of one thirty-two Federal Road, which is the property just north of. My biggest concern is, as they say, the traffic. We can hardly get in and out of our lot just because of the congestion and when there's an open space, they come down the road sixty miles an hour. And in fact, this past year, two of my tenants have been severe accidents. I was in an accident a few years back pulling out and it's something that they don't have any courtesy in trying to let somebody out, okay? And even if the one southbound lane, the two southbound lanes will grant you access, the northbound one, you can't even see if somebody's trying to get to it, it's too late. It's dangerous. The only thing, personally, that I feel possibly a traffic light will slow people down, it'll give everyone a chance to move on.
Right.
So.
Would you like to point out your building, so we can listen?
It is-
There's one twenty-eight.
That's it, right here. We have two entrances, okay? We're just, we're bodying and we're right- Yeah, one entrance here, so they have to- And by having the traffic-
There'd be an entrance here?
That will-
Just coming south. But if they're coming north, they have to use the light. And then coming out, they would just be able to go south. You have to go south, they can't, no left.
Shop right, shop right.
Yeah, shop right.
Shop right.
You have to die in the diner and then you can sneak into the shop right that way and then there's the light there where you can-
Coming north, we'd have to come in this way. We'd have to use the light.
But traffic is for another venue.
Yes, it's not on our door.
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a little, John, the, we think that the current state project addresses some of the issues that you've raised because you're not saying anything that's out of line here. I mean, there's a problem there. But they're currently trying to fix that. And if they identify that there's another traffic light that's needed, and guess who's gonna, they're gonna look to, they're gonna look to us to put one in. But at the moment, our traffic engineer said the state's not gonna do it. Once they change the width of the road, essentially, they change the travel lanes, then it should work.
Right, and I think, well, like, northbound are gonna be forced to use the light, to, you know, because you can't, you know, you have to use the light to get into here, so most of the traffic, because this is in only from south and out to go south. To go north or to come from the north, you have to use the light. So there will be no traffic crossing the, you know, without a light.
But I'm more concerned about if you go there, you'll see the traffic, you know, four lanes to cross over and if no one lets you out, and if people do let you out, the other two lanes going north, you can't even see if it's safe to go.
Well, they'll have, to go north, they'd have to use the light and they have, you know, and there's a turning area.
It's south and south.
That's south and north.
I understand that. But the area between, and it's my understanding that DOT is not widening the roads, they're widening certain sections, certain intersections.
Correct.
Okay, so they're not putting another lane all the way down. They're just taking, you know, certain heavy, uh, how should I say it?
Heavy turning traffic areas and widening those particular cars.
Like a Levas?
My understanding is that they're really trying to address Chick-fil-A to a certain degree because that seems to be a huge problem, but they're addressing it. But-
Have they agreed to it?
Oh, they're working on it.
No, no, I understand, but I, I've heard that the owner of Chick-fil-A is not going to pay for it because she got her approvals prior to.
Oh, that I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Look, I can get DOT's cover in that class.
Right, that's the DOT.
It's all DOT, that's, yeah, they're talking about Chick-fil-A.
I made my contribution on April fifteenth, that budget.
Well, that is my biggest concern. Even with the light as it is down there, it's not giving us, it's unsafe. We've had too many accidents coming out and I've had potential tenants come in there, existing tenants, and we can't deal with this. So anything you can do to minimize, because you also have the Gary Queen just north of it and we're just increasing more and more traffic, that's all. It's not safe, it's simple as that. I see the accidents there all the time. I'm sure it's on the police reports. And they're bad accidents because it's not little bumper and bumpers, you know?
I appreciate it.
That's it.
Thank you. Are there any members, any other members of the public that would like to speak on this application? Hearing none, would you like to make any closing remarks?
Just, the traffic issues, we are more than aware of, as you guys are. And we're really working on our end of it. But in reality, with respect to the traffic, if we were to- Uh, but i- in reality, with respect to the traffic, if we were to convince, which we can't, the inland wetlands commission to move everything back five feet close to the wetlands, the traffic wouldn't be impacting one way or the other, and we wouldn't be here. We're here really to ask you to, to do, to, to, to do a favor, it's essentially to the inland wetlands commission, to allow this plan here. Um, the focusing on the six feet, that's not gonna address the traffic either. The traffic issue, as Fran pointed out, really, we have to deal with at zoning, on site development, uh, your design review. And in reality, we have a good feedback from the DOT that will be okay once we get the traffic improvements made, the, the roadway improvements made on Federal Road. And to that extent, we've worked with them, and I think they appreciate the fact that we said, you don't have to buy a strip of our property. Put your drive, put your, your, your sidewalk in, it's fine, the sidewalk is a good idea. So I think that we will satisfy both the property owners that have spoken, that whatever we're doing is gonna try to address the traffic issues and not make them worse, and I think we've already started there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the following question? I can't take that. What they just spoke about. Sure. Um, the time before, I know you guys bumped the wall out another six feet, the time before that, you were up pretty close, a foot or so away from the wetlands with the wall, but you still technically weren't disturbing any wetlands, they just didn't like it and said, bumped it back?
They felt that.
They didn't believe you.
They didn't believe the structural engineer that we wouldn't disturb the wetland by putting in the footings for the wall. Um, so they wanted a buffer to ensure that we wouldn't disturb the wetland.
So the time before this last time, you still weren't disturbing any wetlands, and they still said, send it back another six feet?
Correct.
That's pretty much correct, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
May I put three bottles on this? I think we've already, what?
Yeah, I think we're done with comments.
Yeah, I think we've already covered that, they've had their closing remarks, everyone's had their chance to speak. Uh, I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion.
Don't worry, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to, uh, public hearing C, eleven Cove Road, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, can you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is David Schwartzbaum, and I live at eleven Cove Road. I have a long name, please call me David. Um, I'm here, uh, to request for the variance relating to the, uh, deck that we want to put in our backyard. Uh, we're rebuilding and enlarging an existing deck, and as part of that, we're putting in a new lower deck, um, where we wanna add a hot tub. Um, in order to do that, we need a four-foot variance over existing stone patio with a small portion of rock ledge. This is, this variance is required because of the rear setback, uh, at the end of our property, which, uh, uh, ties to the two hundred and twenty foot line owned by First Life. I know, Mr. Donnelly, you came to our house over the weekend.
Yes, sir, I'm.
Thank you for allowing me.
Um, it's our pleasure to see you over the weekend. I have photographs, uh, for the benefit of anyone who is not able to visit, I'm happy to, uh, share with you, both to the left and right.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are photographs that are numbered, and there's a cover sheet explaining, uh, what the photographs show. Uh, the two reasons for, uh, the variance that, that support the variance are, are as follows. One, we have the difficult topography, um, in our backyard, we have existing rocks, um, in a rock ledge. This limits our ability to construct, uh, to reconstruct the existing deck or to put in a new deck, and that's because the existing rocks limit where we can have a staircase going from the upper deck downstairs. And as a result of where we need to put the staircase going down, that limits the area where we can put in the lower deck. On, and with that lower deck, we believe that there's also a, a safety issue, that we, without the variance, the size of the deck would be limited in such a way that there would not be a lot of room to walk around on the deck, uh, to walk around the hot tub. We believe that there would be about, about two feet clearance, uh, between, uh, the end of the hot tub and the rock ledge, which is very narrow, and we think is not particularly safe. Um, and relating to that, um, the hot tub manufacturer tells us that, that they need access to all sides of the hot tub. Some of the mechanicals are accessible through the side of the hot tub, and they wanna be able to access that to service the hot tub when needed. Um, the new hot tub, um, or, let me say that again, the new structure will not be visible to any of our neighbors. Some of the photographs that I've submitted toward the end, the last two photographs, um, include a view, uh, from this deck area, stone patio area, to our neighbors to the left and right, to nine Cove Road and thirteen Cove Road, so there's really not an issue that we see as to, um, any of our neighbors. Um, and I think that the photographs show that the rocks and the rock ledge sort of limit how we would be able to do this, so, um, I'm happy to report there's no parking issue in our backyard, um, as we just heard, or traffic issue. So I, I'm hoping this will be a fairly straightforward issue for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or that any members of the public may have relating to our proposal.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Looking at me.
That's true, you're looking.
I mean, I, it's hard to tell, it's good that you provided the pictures, but I don't, it's hard to tell from the drawings exactly. You know, we don't have a survey or anything to see what, what we're talking about here. But I think that your description captured it. Um, it sounds like there's some topographical issues, rock ledge. That are really, um, a hardship here.
Yeah, and, uh, there are two site plans, one is enlarged, the second site plan, I've tried to, uh, mark using hash marks, sort of what the requested variance is. It's actually, um, a small area, uh, toward the, facing the lake, uh, that we would, uh, build over.
Is your variance going towards the woods in, um, in this picture seven? Is the, is the variance going back this way towards the woods?
No, the variance is going, um, away from the house, um, due east, which is toward the cove of, uh, Lake Lulununa.
Do you have on the, any of these pictures have there you would be extending the new deck to?
Yep, may I show you on the, um, the second, uh, site plan, the larger one?
Yeah.
So our, this is the lake here, I think the words got clipped a little bit, the cove, and this is our house, so we're building, uh, uh, the new, uh, deck and lower deck, um, away from the street toward the cove. And the, the requested variance is a small area over, uh, the existing stone patio, and there's a large rock.
Is this the stone patio?
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, if I may, um, photograph number one and two show the area where the lower deck would be built, and the area of the variance that we're requesting, in photograph number one, is a little bit over the existing, uh, uh, rock ledge.
Okay, that's what I.
I'm happy to share that with you.
This is the back of my neighborhood, so I know this area, but the photograph is not conducive to, um,
I'm happy to, I'm happy to share that explanation with other members of the board, that'd be helpful.
I have a quick question. I have a quick, quick question, Mr. Schwartzbaum. Thank you very much.
Please call me David, thank, thank you.
You wanna come forward and let me know if this is accurate, um, kinda do the maps, there's where you're looking for the variance. You got those two, they're monstrosity boulders right there, right?
Yes.
Big boys right there, and, um, I saw some protruding ledge in there, and then you got a pretty good tree line. But, and I guesstimated roughly here, would you say that's about a thirty percent grade, you know, heading downhill?
Yes.
And this one was even a little steeper, maybe about forty percent?
Uh, going straight downhill.
Yeah, that one, going back that way.
I don't think the grade is a severe going to, um.
Towards the tree line?
Toward the tree line as it is going downhill.
Okay, so.
I'm guessing that the grade may be about three percent, it feels much steeper than that walking up the hill than going down the hill, but.
Thank you very much, and I can agree with you, nobody can see it, I did notice that when I was out there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, are there any members of the public that would like to oppose this application? Hearing none, uh, would you like to make any closing remarks?
I have nothing further to add, thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion.
So would.
Second. All in favor? All right. Janet, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure, thank you. I just didn't hear you, didn't want, wanna make sure you didn't disconnect or anything, I can't see the, the phone. Okay, so that brings us to, uh, public hearing D, nine Fawn Ridge Drive, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-two. Uh, there is of course, respondents that I will read into the record first. Uh, we, uh, we reside at fifteen Fawn Ridge Drive, which is next door to nine Fawn Ridge Drive. In this ten-house subdivision, we are the only two houses next to each other. Unfortunately, we feel we must oppose this variance for the following reasons. While enlarging their house would probably increase their property value, we are fairly certain that it would not increase ours. We believe that moving ten feet closer would be, would be more likely to negatively affect our property. And two, pri- privacy concerns. The original owners of their property had told us they built as close to the property line as possible in order to enjoy the view. We hired an architect to help, uh, to help us cite our house for the same reason. TPW, the developer of the subdivision, planted cedar bushes between the two properties in order to enhance each other's privacy. This was of particular importance since our living areas, family room and living room face their house. We believe a ten-foot, two-story addition will detract from that privacy, as well as negatively affect the property value. We would like to point out that in reviewing the file for this application, that we don't think the map for assessment purposes accurately reflects the actual closeness of the two houses. In addition, there's a letter noting Mr. Weinstein's employment by the ten. We don't see the relevance of this fact for the application for a variance. We are uncomfortable in opposing this application as we would like to be considered good neighbors, but since we are senior citizens living on fixed income, our property value is of primary importance to us, as well as the privacy concern. And that's respectfully, David Chik, Chikovsky and Maria Chikovsky. All right, if you could, uh, state your name for the rec.
Robin Susan Weinstein from nine Fawn Ridge Drive. I'll look through this stuff and I'll dress with her. Um, we're looking to add a ten-foot addition to the house. Uh, moving my father, Randy's ninety-two, and we wanna add a one-car garage with a master bedroom, primary bedroom suite on the main floor. To, for the aesthetics of the house, we basically, as the pictures I sent in, wanna, basically, if you wanna take the house and just move it over, expand it ten feet and the whole footprint, so it looks the same. We actually are the smallest house on the street. Uh, every house on that street is a four-bedroom house, we are a three-bedroom house. Uh, the septic is a four-bedroom septic, so that issue is, uh, an issue, but we are the smallest one on, on the street. We've been looking for another house, we wanna stay in Brookfield, I'm not employed by the town of Brookfield, I'm the deputy chief of safety for headquarters company, and I really don't wanna leave town, I enjoy what I'm doing, so we've been looking in Brookfield and nothing has, has worked. As you can see with the photos I've sent in, I sort, sort of drew on those photos, you said, what it would look like. The hardship is, if you see the other photo, is the land, um, they come up the drive on the right side, as you, you saw today how steep it is.
Yes, sir.
It's.
Sir.
When you use the lawnmower going downhill, it's like on a roller coaster ride.
Yeah, and we would have, that Susan Weinstein, nine Fawn Ridge Drive. Uh, I, it, the addition would have to be built on stilts, basically.
To go that side.
Or we'd have to expand the basement to build on that side, which.
For the aesthetics, is, the idea was to keep the whole roof line the same, coming out. That way it would aesthetically look the same. Um, I don't know about the, what you're referring, we have a full copy of the, I should include in there a copy of the survey. Uh, we're fit, the garage edge is fifty-five feet to the property line, as the survey states. And speaking with the contractor, uh, recommended going for a total of fifteen feet out, so the ten, the need for the ten-foot variance.
I understand her concern, cause there is nobody more than me that wants privacy. And what I plan on doing is definitely planting shrubs of trees, you know, some kind of barrier, because personally, I don't want her looking into my yard as much as, you know, she doesn't wanna look into ours.
Replanting stuff with macrobursts took out a couple.
Yeah, and they took out a couple of trees, yeah, even my pool, I don't, you know, she can look into my pool. Um, so I, I understand where she's coming from, but, um, this is the only way we can expand the house. You know, the, the other side of the house, if we could do it down there, we would, but it's just not. You know, it just would be very difficult to build. You know, we had a contractor come out and an archi- architect, and they basically told us that, that really is impossible to build on that side without, you know.
Copies of the survey from the town, but they'll show the, I don't know where she gets this, not accurate, but you can see it to the garage at fifty-five feet. And you have a copy of that, didn't you?
Yes. Just an enlarged version of the.
Copy didn't come out of that good, but.
Right.
Nina had scanned me a copy of that, which I included in my package.
Right. All right, uh, are there any questions?
I actually drove by, I could not see. So I'm actually trying to understand, it says forty feet here to the property line.
Correct.
And then, do we know how far their house from their property line?
Um, would have to be at least fifty, fifty-foot setback, exactly, zone fifty feet. Maybe the. G I S, so they have.
Yeah, that would be, because I drove by.
Do you wanna explain, explain this to a, uh, people, or if you, you know your property better than me, sir?
There you go. We're gonna come, basically this house is just gonna come out a little bit, come fifteen feet this way, all the way back. And up the equal roof line, as you can see, our property line is probably about where the pen is. She's probably farthering fifty feet back.
And there's no other place on the property that you could make this extension?
This, this side of the land there. That's the steep.
And in the backyard?
Well, the backyard, there's no, couldn't get back there, um, when it's wet, this area is very wet.
Yeah, the pool, the septic in the back.
Yeah, pool, septic in the back.
So it would just be, if we went back, it would be a very narrow little area to go back, because of the septic is way off the house.
Even with all the property, because the only one spot.
I forget how many feet.
The. Pool is here, septic's all here, so there's no way, and it's impossible here, the steepness is. Even, I'm getting, most of our land is down here, and all the woods, property lines, like, about down here. This is all, in most part, this is all steep in here, we have no way of doing anything in the backyard, if one spot it could work. This is all steep, and garages are not allowed in front of the house. So we do need to extend over.
Are there any other questions for the applicant?
Well, it sounds like the neighbor has, um, a concern about the accuracy of this map, although it was hand-drawn, it was, uh, photo copy from the town. Do you have a survey, um?
It attaches, the survey, the survey shows the fifty-five feet.
This is the, uh, septic.
With the addition on from the, um.
No, the.
The engineer?
The engineer told us we just need ten feet, so it's not, it's roughly to scale, but it's. So, it's not, it's roughly to scale, but it's, the house is, as the survey shows, fifty-five feet from the property line. Where's the, for the ten-foot.
If he did build it, he'd put it as-built and attach it onto that A-two survey, I guess, or he would have to re-survey it all to show it online. Um, how does that work for him?
It can be a condition of approval.
So I was told from the building department, we didn't need to actually survey to show what the addition would look like. Once everything was approved, they stake out what the, you, if you grant the variance, they stake out where the footing is gonna go, then that is inspected and measured before they dig.
I have a question, sir.
Alright.
Um, so this is my kinda hand-drawn map out there, which is pretty, I, I really didn't look back too much, but I really couldn't see the neighbor's house, I'm not sure of the distance here, but, um, where you wanted to put it here, there's the forty feet. Uh, it's mostly trees, bushes, and there was the knock-down tree bush from the macroburst over there, you know, the tiny tank bed. And then this grade, which is the steep side, you showed the picture, that's, is that about thirty percent, or maybe worse?
It's, I mean, to mow the lawn, you have to go straight down and try and go across it, you're not gonna work.
Okay.
I mean, she is, if this, my house is fifty-five feet, if that's fifty-five, she is at least almost sixty to seventy feet from the property line.
Let me answer. Um, i- is this the only size addition that you looked at for there, sir? If it was at forty-five feet, you couldn't get the same s- size in there, I guess, correct?
It, it would be really tight, um, that's what he'd recommend, we have the five feet, that we don't need anything. Fifty-five, they recommended the average garage is like about thirteen to fourteen feet wide. And they go back, and it even.
So if you're back forty-five, it's just too tight, in your opinion? That, that was my question, sir, thank you very much.
Um, Sean, any other questions?
I wanna, I'm sorry, I wanna ask about the shielding, um, you were talking about the shrubs and so on, it sounds like there's a lot of trees there anyway.
Yes.
So what, what else?
The only gap is really where the micro- macroburst took down that one big tree. And we can get, once, while they're in there working, and will be working there, we can get something planted in there, maybe.
What I saw out there today, I'm not sure of my height, but, and how it is in the winter time, but that had to be eight, ten feet, it was pretty tall, what I saw.
Oh, that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, I mean, and it does block, one of the. Yeah, but the one that fell from the macroburst, it did, it did take away from the privacy.
Yeah, because it pushed down on the other business to bushes and stuff.
There's two gaps in the property, if you wanna, call it the tree property line, there's two gaps that you can see through. One was, one's a natural one, never had anything there, which is what we're under by our, the view of our pool, and there's just that one that was caused by the storm.
Would you be willing to plant, uh, shrubbery or trees in that area where that the macroburst disturbed?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to, once I know that I'm staying there. If I don't, you know, if I don't get the variance, I mean, there's a possibility we may have to relocate, and then I'm not gonna plant trees, but.
But, but you would be okay if we, uh, added that as a stipulation?
Of course, yeah. But I plan on doing it anyway, because like I said, I like my privacy probably more than she likes her privacy.
Do you know what you would plant there, ma'am?
I'd ask my, um, landscaper.
I have no idea.
Whatever kind of tree that, um.
Something big and grows fast.
That grows fast and that's big and will not fall down in macroburst in the future. But yeah, um, and when I say that I like my privacy, I really will have trees.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Allow me to look in, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public that would like to speak, uh, for this application? Hearing none, are there any members of the public opposed to this application? Hearing none, are there any closing remarks you'd like to make?
Yeah, let's thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll take a motion to close the evidentiary portion?
So.
Second from me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to, uh, old business, we have sixty Old Bridge Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty. Have you received anything new from this one?
No, um, he's not present, so I would probably.
Yeah, the updated, uh, it's up to you, I can explain.
Was there something up there?
Well, Mr. Lally, myself went out and walked it, and he did have a hardship where he could not, uh, get for three to four or five months, a survey to go out, I guess they're ripping busy right now.
They are.
So he asked, uh, Mr. Lally if, 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 Mr. Lally and myself could go out there and we walked it with his awesome measuring wheel to the inch. And, um, basically, we did it, got rid of that right side, and if we moved it back to the two oh one, we talked about, and we actually did it from his property line. He gives up a little bit of his property as an easement, 'cause it goes across for these people coming in here. Uh, but it's, it's still back about that two hundred and one feet, if you remember back, Mr. Chairman from a prior meeting. He made the fifty feet on the right side, so we don't longer need that. And he cut it back from ten, uh, seventeen feet to only needs ten feet on the left-hand side. And he's got it back there, and, uh, man, if I can show on my phone. I looked, and if Layer was here, 'cause everything's a hundred percent grown in there now, I stood right here on his driveway, and I'm six foot one, and I snapped the photo to show everybody here. I parked my van directly across from this, and literally like this much of the top of my van is the only thing you can see. And where he's putting the shed is about another eighteen feet or so off to the right of that. Does that sound accurate, Mr. Lally?
That is accurate, yes.
Yeah.
And, and I believe Mr. Minessis signed that last.
He did, yes.
Okay.
So the new one that was walked, he signed, I also did look at the backyard, he, he's, as far as I can see, he has a, um, problem with, you know, the wetlands in the back, left-hand side or towards the back left, or the north side of his property. And I was able to pretty much pick out where his septic is, and he's right, it's pretty much his whole backyard, 'cause it's the nicest grass in this whole property. Uh, and then he's got those big, uh, tulip trees, big massive tulip trees and oaks and other stuff back there. So I think, that's what I, which, that's what I saw, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, but he's not here tonight, and, uh, I'm trying to remember back to last meeting, uh, Mahid, were you here last?
I was not, I was gonna say.
So, well, so, so that's what I'm wondering.
Elijah was on it, I know that.
So that's what I'm wondering, if you wanted to abstain, well, if we wanted to rule on it tonight, if you would abstain, or if we want to wait until he's here and can speak further on it, and then maybe he could hear firsthand from it.
I can abstain from this one.
Okay.
My thought is that he should be present.
That's, that's what I think, that's my thought.
Mr. Minessis?
Yes. Be here.
And he was aware of it, to my knowledge.
Okay, so do we want to table it until next time?
Yes.
I'll move the table until next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, so that one will be tabled.
Mr. Chairman, I need to take off for a while, so I'm, I'm, I think you're all set with me for tonight.
Yeah, uh, I don't have, uh, do you have the stamps?
The stamp is already there, yep.
Just can't.
Hey, just, just making sure, 'cause we're not. Okay. Okay.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so now we will go on to deliberations, uh, the first one being two eighty-three Cannibal Lake Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-six. Take a motion to approve this as submitted?
Move to approve this submitted, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second? Alright, uh, do we have any discussion on this one, this is the, uh, second story addition?
This is the one with the last bit of letter, Mr. Chairman?
I didn't hear the hardship for the record.
Oh, we didn't vote.
We haven't approved it.
No, I know, but in the discussion, I didn't hear it.
Oh, sorry, the hardship, the hardship was the, um.
The pre-existing.
It's the pre-existing.
Non-conforming.
Yeah, they're building a second story on a pre-existing house.
What is the hardship?
Uh, they're building a second stor- their house is pre-existing, and they wanna build a second story, but because the house is non-conforming, the second story would also be non-conforming.
But not up.
But not, yeah, not up, it's that the house is three feet too close to the sideline.
Right, the right sideline.
To the right sideline, and therefore the second story would also be three feet too close to the right sideline. Unless you pick up the whole house and leave it three feet over. Okay.
This is the one with that last bit of letter, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, this had the letter, uh, from today, if anyone wants to read that, since I, I didn't even see it until I opened the file.
I don't issue with the letters, again, the writing in the macro. The letter, the letter doesn't address the actual variance that we're, that we're discussing.
Yeah, that's. This is, this might have thought on it too, it's, uh, upset about the, uh, height, but the height isn't what's up for variance in the first place, it's the three feet to the right. Sideline, although I guess one could argue, I think that's the sideline that might.
Yeah, that her view.
That her view is on, so I'm not sure if the three-foot.
Wag, uh, right here on the.
Yeah, yeah, she's there, or.
This wagon is right here.
And the variance is, no, the variance is.
The right.
Okay, that, yeah, that is on Y on your side, so, so that is the way that it could possibly affect the variance, is if the three-foot over.
But it's like three feet over.
Right, it's, uh, two feet and, what, two feet and seven inches or two?
But that's not on the property, I'm sorry, but that's not, that's the fine part, you're delivering, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Yes, we're delivering, uh, for this, but yes, it's, it's not a height issue, yes.
Agree.
Yeah, agree, yeah.
Great. Okay, uh, is there anyone who feels comfortable to vote?
Yes.
Uncomfortable, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, all in favor of approving this application as submitted?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh, five to zero, the hardship again is the, uh, pre-existing structure. Alright. On to the second, uh, one twenty Federal Road, Z dash twenty-two dash twenty-seven, I'll take a motion to approve as submitted?
Motion.
This is motion, second. Discussion for this one, this is the drive, or again, drive-through restaurant.
They did everything they could, um, to try to fit within the contours of the wetlands requirements.
Oh, uh.
They've done a lot to fit within the requirements of the inland wetlands commission, and the traffic issue is not an issue before us today.
Right, yeah, I, I agree, I don't think the six feet closer, uh, the parking lot would be to the road is, even out of the ordinary for Federal Road itself, I haven't gone, I haven't measured any of the other, uh, parking lots from Federal Road, but they're all pretty close to the, uh, the road itself or the property line, so I'm not sure that it's even out of conformance with the other buildings there.
I think when you go into the BJs, um, you know, when you make the right, you're kind of going in, and everybody's going in, so it wouldn't change as much the traffic.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it would affect the traffic from thirty-two as much, because there's no traffic exiting the proposed structure towards, uh, thirty-two.
But there's entrance, the entrance exit on both sides, Mr. Chairman.
Well, but the exit is a one-way exit, which heads northbound towards the traffic light, so exiting this structure is either, uh, on the side road that the BJ's is on, or it's turning away from thirty-two and going northbound. The only way you can exit the structure and go southbound is if you exit and then turn left at the light and head down.
I, I, I agree with Lisa, that it's, traffic is not something that we're, that we can, like, it's not the norm.
Yeah, and I don't think the structure affects it that much.
I think, I think the variance give or not give, I don't think it's, it's changing the traffic, the traffic is, it's a perpetual problem for that road, and has been there and will be there too.
And I think it's, yeah.
They're in the process of addressing it, but it, either way, it's beyond our purview.
Right, if it's a serious issue, it'd be brought up with the zoning commission or one of the other awards to address.
I could, um, yeah, so, yeah. I completely disagree, I am adamantly opposed to this, and I'll tell you why, there's two things. The inland wetlands, they went in front of them multiple times, and the last two times that they were in front of them, they disturbed zero percentage, not one iota of the wetlands. So I don't really see what the hardship is, other than wetlands saying, ah, you know what, I know you're not disturbing any wetlands, but go move it. Um, I watched the video on them, and you really gotta watch the videos at the inland wetlands meeting, and the, the, to me, the, the biggest thing they have on there, and I know, I realize they have on there, uh, is a hardship, the FEMA flood zone and everything, but that is to the west of the side, so it's not really an issue on the property. The biggest part of the, the application here, the hardship that they're showing is the wetlands, but they're not disturbing any wetlands, so I don't understand it. Number two, safety is our number one, if you read the Connecticut statute, and the ZBA is health, life, safety, gender welfare, and property values of the people. Um, safety is a humongous concern, I asked, uh, their attorney, Mr. Marcus, if they done any studies, uh, with DOT, nothing. I asked him about Brookfield Police Department, nothing. Um, they didn't even ask the, the Fire Marshal's office, the simple question I asked is a follow-up, following up from their letter from them about the fire hydrant, if they'd have to pull up on there. And then the other thing is the developer himself, Mr., uh, I'm gonna say his last name, Ron.
Rebecca.
Thank you, Mr. Rebecca's, he already knows that there's gonna be a traffic issue, 'cause if you watch the inland wetlands meeting, I could pull it up right now, uh, five twenty-four, twenty twenty-one meeting, at thirty-three minutes and thirty seconds. And he's responding to the chair there and the vice chair, and he says, if we do that, and that's this extra six feet he's talking about, which is where they're at now, 'cause they weren't disturbing any wetlands prior to that, the just wetlands said, ah, take it back another six feet. He said, when you do that, you're gonna crunch everything forward, and it's gonna be too tight to negotiate for all vehicle movements, which is a safety issue. It's a safety issue for all the people in there and emergency vehicles, that's just my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
That's an opinion, though, and we're, and that's not before us, we don't have the facts to make that determination.
Right, we don't have enough facts.
So let's say, let's say the wetlands, the wetland says, okay, with zero percent disturbance, you know, they have proven, it doesn't even come to us.
That's right.
The problem would still say the same, you know, the traffic problem still say, so it's between the two committees, you know, the two committees, right?
I understand, it, well, that, that brings up a third issue, I, uh, we've had issues before with wetlands, seven oh one Federal Road, okay? Seven oh one Federal Road, they were legitimately disturbing a hundred square feet of the wetlands, and we approved that, and we said, yes. This is not disturbing any wetlands.
Yeah, but it's not for you to say that, it's for the wetlands to say, let's program.
I'm repeating what they say, I'm repeating what they say.
Are you saying to send it back to wetlands?
If, if they, if they'd like to go back to wetlands, I think that's fine, but the only way to send that back to wetlands is we disapprove it, or we ask them to change something on it, but I, I'm ready to vote on it today because I don't see a hardship, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
The hardship has been determined by the wetlands.
And we're discussing, but if we move it the six feet back, we are disturbing the wetlands.
No.
That's determined by the wetlands, yeah.
We are disturbing.
If you move it the six, six feet back.
We are, we are.
We are deliberations.
Well, I know, but he, I'm, he's misspeaking, so I wanna clarify.
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we would be disturbing the wetlands if we moved it six feet back, that's why.
Well, because wetlands, if I remember correctly, they said, well, when they build that wall, they're gonna have to step a foot into it to, to build the wall? Is that the part of disturbing you're talking about, ma'am?
No, so, uh, the original, without coming for a variance.
You were disturbing four hundred.
We were disturbing the wetlands.
The most recent time that they went to the wetlands was the.
Just disturbing zero.
And the wetlands still made them kick it back.
That's exactly correct, I'll play the video right here.
They made a determination that six feet or whatever is the appropriate footage to protect.
Right, but this variance is not saying.
For us to challenge.
No, what, it wasn't to protect, it, it wasn't to protect, I don't, you'd have to watch the video, I, quite frankly, I don't understand it.
But that's a determination, and it's, it's not before us to go and, and pick apart the wetlands, what they.
I'm not picking it apart, but normally we should, we would have a reason, I, and I'm using, I'm using an old case, because it's the only thing that I have fresh, and I'm brand new at this, but seven oh one Federal Road, they were disturbing the wetlands. No matter what, even, even if they, I believe they were gonna add another twenty-two hundred square feet of wetlands in the back, and they said, absolutely not, there's a hundred square feet of wetlands, boom, we all took that into consideration, and we approved it, because they were physically disturbing it. I, there's, I don't see any disturbance here, so why, why do they need the variance, that's what I don't understand.
The variance is still at the request of the wetlands.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the point, yeah, that's where we are kind of, because it's them telling us that.
This is an issue.
They'd rather have us to the variance than compromise with the wetlands.
But, but nobody's addressed any safety issues at all, I mean, we've all lived in.
But that's not within our purview, I feel like you're using this as a pretext, where you don't want the thing built there.
No, I don't care.
Right, I don't.
I'm, I just look at the facts.
I, I think the safety issue would be there with the variance, with the wetlands proving it, or with us doing the ver- you know, and what I'm saying?
Yeah, if the, yeah, if the var- if the variance changed the safety concerns, that would be something, but the, our, the variance they're requesting makes no change to the safety. to the safety concern, if there's a safety concern, it's about something that the zoning commission can request to change, or the fire marshal when they have to go before them, or it's something another board is concerned with, our concern with is the six feet towards the property line, and that will not change the safety.
Right. Then, then why didn't Mr. D. Rebecca say this in the, the five twenty-four meeting about basically?
What was that?
But we're not considering the facts of that meeting tonight, we're considering the facts that were put in front of us.
So we're not allowed to look at the.
No, but I, I think your research is fine, what we're, what we're trying to say is today in front of us, what we have is, you know,
and you didn't.
We're not, we're not part of the zoning, I'm sorry, the wetlands commission, we're part of the zoning board of appeals, so our deliberation is different than theirs.
Right, whatever, whatever said, whatever the speculation is for that meeting, I mean, I'm not sure, but it was also
Yeah.
for whatever proposal they had at the time, when he said it crunched the uh, the parking lot, was that before they suggested moving it six feet forward? Was that just when wetlands said, no, you can't have six feet, they thought we will just squish it, and that was.
It was, it was before, it was before, and they, they had the wall built.
Right, so.
It's based on a different set of facts than before.
Right, it's a different, it's a different blueprint.
They had had the wall, which wasn't disturbing at all, but.
And then you say.
They had a problem with how they were building a wall or something like that.
But then you say, you spoke with the fire marshal and they said the current plans would not cause an issue.
I think if I even said that, everything has to go through.
No, no, no.
Right.
Yeah, I just asked, yeah, I followed up on the letter that they had for the uh fire hydrant they were putting out there, which was wonderful, and then uh asked about, you know, safety and fire engines and stuff like that, and uh, that, that twenty-five feet. And the twenty-five feet and his understanding, and have Fran and I went over, it was a couple of different things, it was in case DOT had to come out, had to widen roads, and, and there's, your case, I believe, is sidewalks, is what they're putting in there now. But he did say that, hey, if there's a fire or something like that, they can't get in the parking lot, they're, they're going on there, they're, they have to.
And that would be addressed at the, the zoning commission.
Right.
The fire department has to approve it too, right, everybody has to approve it, so.
Yeah. So if, if that is a pressing issue, that they don't think it'll work, they can disapprove it at that point.
Correct.
Okay, are we good to vote on this? All in favor of approving this application as submitted?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
No, aye.
All right, the motion fails three to two.
Well, she said aye.
She said aye, was that for opposition or approval, Janet?
Opposition.
Okay, motion fails three to two. The next case up is eleven Cove Road, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-one.
The motion approved as submitted, Chairman.
Yes, I have a second.
Second.
All right, uh, this is the patio and, or deck and hot tub.
I believe it, is that also a pre-existing non-conformity? I had that question, is that one also a pre-existing non-conformity or not?
Uh, it's a dish and two, it's not a pre-existing.
Oh, the rock ledge is the hardship.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's the top, it's top, and the safety of, they can't reasonably put the tub in if they stay within the bounds because you have only a.
I absolutely agree, the ledge, and the five feet is an issue, and I have no problem granting the grounds, Mr. Chairman.
I have no issues, I have no issues either.
Well, if we're good to vote, all in favor of approving as submitted?
Aye.
Aye. Janet?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay. And then, yeah, sir, last one for the evening is nine Fawn Ridge Drive, Z dash twenty-two dash thirty-two, motion to approve as submitted?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All right, uh, discussion on this one.
I have no issues.
I think it's okay with the, if we had the stipulation that they.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, right.
Because the, the main concern seems from the uh letter we have, uh, we've all seen it, it was an email this morning, so I'll make sure everyone had a chance to read it, was that
Yeah.
it's a, a privacy concern what could affect.
I don't think I received it, another, um, was it in an email?
Yeah, it was an email this morning, uh, yeah, Fran sent it out around eight or nine, I think, something like.
I would like to put the stipulation on about the shoes and the trubs for the barrier to repair where the microburst did the damage, Mr. Chairman, I just don't know enough about landscaping to recommend what to plant there.
I don't know either, but.
We could recommend.
Usually they, uh, recommend a certain number of trees, or shrubs usually.
Yes, well, they, yes. Okay, so they said there's two openings, so we could recommend a tree for each opening?
Yeah, is there, is there a way we can get a tree, uh, that would grow to a similar height of what used to be there? Is that, is that possible, I just don't know.
Pines usually grow quicker than. Something, is, is, is it something native and.
All right.
Carnivorous.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add as a stipulation, two carnivorous.
Yeah. Carnivorous.
High trees, um.
Girby.
Girby, enough to repair for where the microdamage took, took place to increase the barrier for the next renovation, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to add how much time they have to plant such trees within a certain number of?
Is thirty days enough?
Or before the.
No, but they want to.
Just do it before the.
Before the end of construction.
Before, yeah, before the constructions.
Before any constructions completed, Mr. Chairman.
Before.
Yeah, not before, before the constr, constructions complete.
Before the constructions completed, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It seems like topography is a huge issue for this.
Yeah, there's no.
I agree.
It's property.
Okay, uh, I'll second Alan's motion, so, all, all in favor of adding the stipulation?
Aye.
Aye. Janet?
Aye.
Great, uh, all in favor of, I need a vote for approval submitted as well, okay, all in favor of, to make sure, all favor of approving as with stipulation?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, and that is the end of our applications for this evening. Okay, and then we have the matter of the ZBA bylaws. Has everyone had a chance to look over the most recent graph that was included?
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate your consideration.
It's, uh, yeah, let's uh, make a motion to.
I'd like to recess for a five-minute quick recess, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute rest and recess.
Okay.
Okay, uh, second motion? Aye?
Aye.
Or you didn't hear that?
Uh, Alan's making a motion for a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to, um, do the bylaws next time, um, I was under the impression, uh, when we first um, came to uh the ZBA meeting, that we would only limit it to four applicants, and now, um, it was six, well, it was really five.
Well, I don't, I don't remember.
She's talking about on the particular applications on right here and right now, and what, you're thinking about adding, trying to ask something about that?
I don't remember anything.
I don't think that's.
I think there was a phone call.
What, what do you, what, what are you saying, Janet, I don't remember anything.
I, I don't even think that's appropriate.
I, I thought we were talking about that we would, uh, because at the time, um, with each applicant, that it was limited to four applicants to be heard.
I.
No, the time is, I don't think that's appropriate, I don't think that's permissible even.
We, we do have the option if, for whatever reason.
But is it because of the legalities?
Yeah, so people have the right to have their stuff heard.
Yeah, they get their applications in by a certain time, it has to be heard by.
Right. Yeah, there are, yeah, there are requirements for, we do have to hear applications at the next meeting, so long as they're uh, submitted at a certain time, now, there's certain things we can do in regards to if a meeting does go on, I'm sure, till some very late hour, that we can hold a s- a special meeting, uh, right, we need forty-eight hours notice for a special meeting, if for some reason there's so many applications that we can't hear them all in one night, but generally speaking.
But, Mr. Chairman, what about limiting the amount of time for each applicant?
Yeah, I could see, I see, I understand what you're saying, Janet, if, if there's six or eight of them on there, you might say five minutes.
No, but everybody deserves their time here.
Right.
As, as.
I understand.
Of twenty, twenty-five minutes?
Well, one twenty Federal Road was mostly questions that the board had for the applicant, it wasn't the applicant going on a long spiel, we can what, we could limit, it could be even in the, in the bylaws, we could limit the board member's time to speak.
We can limit Alan.
Yeah. We can, we can cap board members at a certain amount of time to speak, but we can't really cap the applicant at a time to speak, especially when it's the board hogging most of the the time.
Janet doesn't wanna hear you anymore.
I think if an applicant isn't given enough time, that gives them grounds for appeal.
Agreed, yeah.
Yes, the, the applicant should be allowed to speak, but we could, we could discuss, and if we want to discuss the bylaws next time, we could discuss limiting board members' time to question, if we want to speed the.
None of this sounds very democratic.
I, I don't, I don't think so too, because I, what is the point of this process if we're going to say, hey, you can only ask one question? You know, that way you're gonna say.
Well. Well, but the, I, I'm not saying we need to do something like that, I'm talking at a possible.
Yeah, no, I, I feel this is, some days will be, some days will be busy and some days will be.
I would overthrow my, my motion. I'm all right, man.
You've recovered.
I think so.
Okay, uh, so, so Janet, you wanted to table the bylaws discussion till next meeting?
I think, no, it's, it's, it's all the board to review it now, um, that would be fine with me, I just, uh, think it's already, um,
The rich is not here, Larry's not here.
Forty-nine, it's according, oh, Mr. Corded in nine, so, um, how, I mean, I don't know how long, I would think if this would be a one, two, three thing, I think that it would probably be deep in discussion. And if the board wants to, you know, uh, do it, give more time, well, I'll, I'll be available to do it, I'm just.
You wanna jig into draft fourteen a little bit now, Janet?
Is it thirteen?
I would, I mean, if the board wants to do it, if everyone wants to do it, I'll, I'll do it.
How do you?
Yeah, I mean, my, my question was kind of hung up, um, on, uh, an email exchange that we had.
Oh, I have that.
Um, I thought you might, uh, it be, yes, I, I, I basically, we were trying to, um.
Uh, let's see, I got a.
Figure out, coming up with rules about how to, um, elect certain, um, board members to the executive section of the board, like what you did in the beginning, which was to elect the chairman, and the vice chair, and the secretary, um, and how many votes you need, I could not find in the regulations, any guidance that was specific to how many votes were needed, whether it's majority or not, and we were going back and forth about it.
The closest was kind of the town charter, right?
Yes.
Kind of sort of the town charter.
And I said, well, what, like, while we're spinning our wheels, why don't we ask, um, Nina and Fran, or, you know, maybe we need to go to the town attorney, but I don't know the process, I've never really.
Yeah, here, I think that was the first, Janet, you can.
I have already done that, I arranged, uh, for our town attorney to review all of the bylaws.
Yeah, the whole one, so.
Okay.
We're doing it correctly, and.
So whatever we put in there is gonna get looked at and reviewed.
Well, good.
By a lawyer, um, not to say that you're not a lawyer, I don't.
No, I mean, I, I mean, I.
She's a lawyer.
I'm not the lawyer for the town.
When we are all in agreement of what's in it, the contents of it, then I will forward it on, um, to Attorney Schlesberg, and she can review it and give us, uh, her opinion.
Okay.
You want me to read that first paragraph, that's kind of what we're talking about, right, at the very beginning?
I don't recall exactly where it was, but, you know, I mean.
Or it's okay.
If she's gonna, I, I'm okay with the current draft as it is, if she wants to, if anybody has comments on it, you know, raise them, and then once we're set, she can submit it to the attorney.
Well, there is, there is one thing I'd like to discuss that we went to, did you, uh, I couldn't see everybody that was, that was on, you know, the training meeting with the new town attorney?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there was one, you were on that one?
I was on that email.
Yeah, oh, no, no, the actual training meeting.
No, I did not go to that email.
Well, she brought up something that we had brought up in our meetings, remember we were discussing, um, whether, uh, basically if somebody had to.
Uh, yes, the, uh.
They had to get out, yeah, she made a good point there.
I was wondering if it, uh, the town attorney at the meeting suggested that if someone.
They recuse procedures in the conference.
Recuse themselves, that they not be allowed to make comment or discuss.
But that was her suggestion.
They, they thought if someone recused themselves, they should step fully away from the case.
Oh, that kind of makes sense.
And to not influence, which.
Yeah, it kind of sort of makes sense, but I could see.
That's the one point of the refusal, I guess.
Right, because originally we were discussing, I think Larry made a point to say, well, you shouldn't be allowed to vote, but you should still be.
Didn't she say during the meeting, you should actually step up and leave the room?
Get up, to get up and leave the room, but not to be part of.
Yeah.
He was like, step up, leave the room.
Don't influence it.
And I was like, wow, I, we've gotta go over this with everybody, because this is totally different, and like how things were done in the past, and what we were thinking on it. It's just, you know, it's a, what she brought up, and I wanted to make sure I brought that up.
The reason for recusal is that you are not comfortable.
Right.
Yeah, there's a clear reason.
For your conflict.
Yeah.
Maybe it's your neighbor or.
Right.
Yeah, and she was like, recuse, just stay out of it, uh, you know, question in the beginning, totally, literally get up and leave the room, somebody have to come.
Unduly influencing the outcome?
I guess that's what she was.
So that will.
Yeah, so we're gonna have.
I'm not asking questions, I'm not leaving the room, the room is pretty important, it's, it enables you, not task, not tough, right?
Mr. Yeah.
Well, I'm sure that's the. I'm sure, I'm sure that's the most legally protective answer to say, you can't ask for an appeal if I'm literally not in.
Not in the room.
Otherwise, you can say, well, he was glaring at me while I was.
Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if, if, if Janet and Lisa maybe went, went over that one and tweaked it or whatever? I don't know if it's.
Well, what does everyone want?
Literally leave the room.
I don't know if we need to leave or.
I don't know if we need to.
I think commissioners should sit in the audience.
I second that.
Yes.
I think so too, I don't think leave the room.
Oh, you've seen that in the past?
I've seen that, like, on the zoning commission.
Janet's having trouble.
They walk to the other side of the table.
No, that's a good idea.
Because they are still a resident of Brookfield, they still have every right to be there.
Janet's having trouble understanding everyone talking, so we're just.
Oh, I'm sorry, Janet, we're just, we're having amongst ourselves.
Yeah, so we're discussing. We're, we're discussing changing the, uh, uh, when someone recuses themselves, uh, from them having the right to question and comment, to them essentially forfeiting the right to question and comment, and if someone recuses themselves, they would get up from the table and go sit in the audience as a member of the public.
We also had another question during that meeting that came up about abstentions, and she was gonna check into it, I don't know if she's ever gonna get back, but I was watching, you know, the legal class, uh, there's one from the UConn gentleman, I've just been doing it forever, the professor, and he said, there's one case in Can- in Connecticut where an abstention, abstention was taken as a yes vote, and one case in the state of Connecticut where an abstention was taken as a no vote.
That's more of a legal court case than anything that affects bylaw, that's not gonna affect bylaws.
Best thing to do this. Yeah, that sounds weird. No, I know that, but if we like abstain on something or something, could somebody say, oh, wait, he was, he really meant to say yes or no and have a legal basis to do it? Maybe you're better off just saying, recusal, and I'm leaving the phone or, or the room, or, or I'm going out in the audience.
Well, abstention isn't the same as refusal, abstention is when you don't, abstention is you're willing to hear the case, but you haven't come to a decision.
He didn't know about that, he wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, she wasn't aware of it, she was gonna look it up.
Yeah, so she can look it up, it's not.
That was another thing that I, I kind of took away that and a few other things she said in the meeting, but I think we're gonna have to tweak that.
Yeah, we'll need to tweak the, uh.
Recusal procedures.
The retain, yeah, from retaining, uh, I've made the adjustment to just changing retain to forfeit the right to question or comment, that was my adjustment.
Yeah, well, we just cut all that out of there and just say, is.
Well, I wanted to specify in it that you, if you recuse yourself, you do not have the right, I wanted to have a sentence that very clearly said, you've recused yourself, you're out.
Okay, I'm making a note on that, did you hear that, Janet?
Yes.
Just adding to, uh, retain the right, it's just forfeit the right, it replaces that word, that kind of covers that.
Other than that, I just had grammatical things, under notice of hearings on page two, it says abetting the property, should say abutting the property?
Uh, which page, page two?
Uh, page two, has, uh, oh, uh, that is, that is abetting the property. Okay, it's just, just grammatical, I was just reading it over, I said, wait a minute, it's not, it's not, it's not.
ABEA?
I will change that.
ABEA?
ABEUTT.
ABUTT, it's just an E. A B U T T T. It's supposed to be you instead of me. But, 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 um. Oh, I wondered if we should, and this goes back to that meeting with the town attorney, uh, strike open executive session since that's it may turn out a real legal term.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to figure out how to ask her. She was, uh, going over procedures and stuff, and you go on stuff, and I'm like, well, we kind of have an open executive. She's like, no, you don't have an open executive session. We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the best term?
She said deliberations. She said there's executive session, which is closed, and then.
Open executive deliberations, right, I guess? But it really is discussion.
That was just, again, a minor tweak where I was wondering.
We say discussions slash deliberations?
No, I think she said deliberations. I think that's what she said is. When you deliberate, when a, when a jury goes in, um, you deliberate what, what the evidence says.
Right. So just, just minor things. Those were my tweaks.
Where was that, uh, uh, abetting?
Oh.
Uh, page two, it's, uh, under the notice of hearings.
Yeah, notice of hearings.
Says, the board members shall give the public notice of a hearing to any owner's property that is abetting the property in question.
Lisa brought up something good. Didn't you say, uh, put, uh, Roman numerals in these sections or something?
Well, it's, I, I, I like to number.
I, I, I would like.
Is that okay? Uh, so like one, or two, or three, like this?
Yeah. Just so it's easier to find, so you're not like, where is.
Yeah, I like that. Section one, section two.
Because otherwise you're looking through all the pages, where's the notice of.
Is that draft thirteen, which is what?
It is right here.
You like that too, right? Just number them all.
So number them, uh.
One, two, three. Each one of these will be its own Roman number, right?
It, yeah, it makes it easier to follow.
And three, four.
The point of paragraphs will be A, B, C, whatever.
Six. Seven.
People want to humor another strike, um.
Motion to second or amend.
I thought there was no reason to have under order of business on page four, a bullet point for motion to second or amend minutes of prior month's meetings.
Because we automatically know that.
That's part of review minutes. It, that's not its own thing. The motion to amend minutes is reviewing.
That's on page four, Janet?
Those seem like the same thing. We don't have, there's not bullet points for every motion.
I agree.
So I do need a bullet point for that motion.
All right, uh, we repeat that so I can.
So the fourth page. Yeah, page four. Uh, order of business and executive deliberation.
Whatever it changes to.
Uh, one, two, three, fourth one down, strike it. Motion to second or amend minutes of prior month's meeting, strike it.
Just because it's part of review minutes, it's part of that. Motioning and reviewing the minutes are the same thing, so. And, uh, it's basically all I have. There's some, uh. There's some tweaking I had with the end, but I don't want to get into it.
So, so.
I don't know if anyone wants to.
Wait, at the end?
Uh, I made a, I, I made.
Why don't you scan the center there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give it to, I'll just give it to Janet so she can look. I thought it was weird that the written communications part is in section F when it's the second thing that happens.
Hey, Janet, Carl's pointing out, which is a great idea, page six, uh, just basically reshaping it in the way that we do things here and, and the order.
Right, it's, I have, uh, you know what I can, you know what I can scan her, is the script I read at the beginning has the list of things as we actually do them, so.
Yeah.
You could just, I could just send you that.
That's a good idea.
Cause that.
That says the order of things.
That's the way you want it, the way you want it typed?
Yeah, the, the script has, I think, a better order of how the things are done than the last page. Just, it just makes it clearer, so I can send you, I can send you that. And that's all I have. I swear.
That's all I have.
Anyone else? Everyone wants to go home?
I actually have to say I have not read. I wasn't part of this originally, so I haven't, yes.
Oh, we have time.
Um, we'll sit here and wait until.
I wouldn't put you tonight.
You should have nice Roman numerals next time you, uh.
We'll have more time to adjust it if we need any of it. Okay, uh, Alan makes a motion to adjourn?
Like to move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Still before nine o'clock.
There you go.
We can hear two of the other people.
So July fourth is a Monday.
Yes.